Order of the Lincoln County Board of Education meeting and ready to session on Tuesday, July 25th at 7:00 PM. Group to Central Office in Hamlet. Board Member Jeremy Wilson for the regionists and the plan to Lincoln.
But we just commit the fire, the obvious states of America. And three really hard way for which it stays. One nation under God, indivisible, limited in that justice.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We have no one scheduled for public comment tonight. Takes us down to item three. Recognition. We have a celebrity of sorts here tonight.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Lady Katie Browning, who has excelled in the Educator Rising Competition. And she is the only student in West Virginia to be in the top ten in the nation. That's phenomenal. So Katie, you can, I asked you to come forth with podium here and tell us a little bit about the Rising Educator Rising Competition. Well, you don't have to, you're, you're on crutches, okay? And you just talk from there.
Yeah. You can hold up your step. Okay, so we kind of had like, she was gonna talk about that.
It's do they. It's do they.
Yeah, okay.
Join in this here over there.
As he said, she won't.
When you put, when you finish, pull her little chair there. I'm just using.
I thought it's good.
Good evening, my name is Mindy Bracken and I'm the instructor for the Early Childhood Education Program at Lincoln County High School. Mr. Barnett asked one of my students and I, Katie, to come and talk to you about our recent experience at the Educators Rising National Conference in Orlando. When I started at LCHS two years ago, I'd never heard of Educators Rising. I came to learn that it's a CTSO, a Career and Technical Student Organization. The goal of Educators Rising is to create a clear pathway for future educators and to increase teacher preparedness and quality by working with State Departments of Education and school chapters to feed teacher prep programs at colleges and universities. The organization hosts leadership conferences and competitions much like Skills USA and HOSO. I started the first chapter of Ed Rising at LCHS last year and nearly all the students in the ECD program were able to join as members at no cost thanks to the West Virginia Department of Education. Some of the seniors in the program attended the Fall Leadership Conference last year in Morgantown. And then in the spring, we took a total of ten students, including juniors and seniors, to Canine Valley in March. And you may be wondering what future educators would be competing at. Among many public speaking categories, just some of the events that our students competed in included the Interactive Bulletin Board Event, Teacher Created Instructional Materials, Creating Children's Literature, Lesson Planning and Delivery. And then we have one group competing, doing a presentation on an innovative strategy being used in Lincoln County schools. The state competition, seven out of the ten students that we took placed and qualified for the national competition in Orlando. I wanted to commend two of those competitors. One is Madison Scarborough, she's not here tonight, but she authored and illustrated this piece of children's literature, which Mr. Miller showed you all pretty good, I think. This rivals books that I have read in my fifteen plus years in preschool classroom. It was just, I guess.
She wrote it and did the.
She illustrated and wrote the story. And it's kind of a, it's about a black bear, so that's kind of an honor to West Virginia. And she even has a page in here that shows the bear's sightseeing at the New River Bridge. So she did a fantastic job. She wasn't very comfortable presenting and I think that kind of hurt her. A lot of the other kids of the nationals were costumes and so anyway, but she did a great job and I wanted to commend her also. Let's see. Katie is our other student that I wanted to talk about. She's here with me tonight and I'm proud to say that not only did she place in two categories at the state level, she did an individual competition, which is what she's going to talk to you about, but she was also in that group that did the group competition. But she finished top ten in her category in Orlando within the lesson planning and delivery competition. There were several categories in that competition. They could do STEM lessons, arts, humanities, or CTE. Katie chose to do a lesson in the arts category where she was required to submit a typed lesson plan along with a video of her delivering the lesson, the lesson, which the judges watched prior to her doing her presentation with them. She also chose to do a PowerPoint presentation reflecting on her lesson. And she's wanted to tell you about her experience, but first I want to congratulate her as she was one of, I think there were a handful of kids from West Virginia that finished in the top ten in their categories. But Katie graduated in May from Lincoln County and she's going to be going to Marshall this fall. And she's majoring in elementary education, so we're hoping that she will come back to Lincoln County and share her gift with us because Christie, who she did her lesson in Ms. Christie's classroom at Hamlet Pre-K eight, and I'm sure Christie will agree that Katie's a natural born teacher. So here's Katie.
Thank you. Baby, you're in the spotlight.
Not yet. Hello, guys, my name is Katie Browning. And I am here to talk to you today about sculpture, my lesson plan that I did with Christy Atkins at Hamlet Pre-K eight, sculpture and three dimensional art. So basically this lesson plan was, I mean, me and my friends kind of sat down and we're playing around with paper. And we decided to do like a, an art through the mental art and it uses their motor skills. They can, they can take a pencil and they can swirl the paper across it and then they can. I had plenty of kids when I did my video, they were like, Ms. Katie, Ms. Katie, look what I did. They were really excited about what their creations was. And then we would like fold the paper back and forth and we were making little staircases. And this is the one I took over laying there with me actually. And I think all the kids did really good. I also did guided art group break with them. It was like a self-assessment. And it was just like basics for little ones and I was ready to. And what they, they did, they used their time well and worked hard and then give theirself a smiling face. And then you go to the next one, pieces are attached and nothing falling off of the sculpture and they can also get a smiley face. And I know I really liked doing this and I know Jaylyn really liked doing that. So I think it was a good, it was a good lesson plan and I really enjoyed it. And I really enjoyed working with the kids in my CTE program. Questions. You're gonna be a teacher.
And I'll come with you. Katie, I can just tell you, I've been doing this a long time. And that was a very good lesson. And I'm glad to see you get kids involved in the board. Importantly, I'm glad to see you're excited about it. Excited about what you're doing. I mean, all the degrees in the world are not going to help you if you're not, if you love what you do, you'll never work a day in your life. So if you love working with little children, that's, God bless you. So I have a little certificate for you there. And congratulations, if you want to turn around there and get your picture taken. Grab your places. Katie, please.
Yes, we can get together, like Katie. Read this. Let's go, let's go around here, Katie can say.
I want to see that. No, I'm on. There you go. I'm gonna go. All right, great. One, two.
Congratulations. And Board Members, while we're at it, I would like to also take Ms. Bracken for her commitment to the CTE program. Going on those trips, I've been there and done that many, many, many times. She's not compensated for that, that's on her time, but her compensation is sitting next to it. So she, I want to commend her for her dedication to her students and dedication to what she does every day in the classroom. And to Christie for her dedication to allow her to come in and take part in her classroom, just that's what it's about. It's about everybody working together. There, in, in education and what we're doing here, it can't be me, it has to be we in order to make anything happen. And I just say, I'm excited to see this kind of thing happening, you know, straight out of the gate and look forward to many, many more good things at Lincoln County High School and all their other schools across the, across the district and towards them.
Thank you, Katie. When you graduate, I will be on the board then, I know that. You remind these folks up here, if they're still here, that you stood before us tonight and presented. And you're the kind of person that we want to come back into this county. Now, anybody get hired being a teacher, you have a credential. Because teachers are in demand. But good teachers are rare. Everybody likes to think of themselves as good teachers, but my years of experience, that probably twenty-five percent of people in the classroom were outstanding teachers. Fifty kind of got along and did what they're supposed to be doing, but they didn't have that seal. And then there's twenty-five percent that just fulfilling their salary obligations. Change lives when you teach, when you teach well, change lives. And you've got a couple of people right there beside you who I think would test that. And we need you at Lincoln County. So you keep that in mind all the time you're studying, you learn already, you can learn and come back. Part of the fun with young kids that do, first two or three years of school are, can't exactly recount what they are. And they need a smiling face and an energetic person to lead them. So we're looking forward to seeing you back. Thank you.
We have another one that actually went to Orlando too, her best friend, Jaylyn, she also went to Orlando.
Same applies to you as well. I'm on the internet today, Jaylyn.
Jaylyn Lucas.
She was in the group one, the insider schools.
Girls excel in college and then come back here. These folks will hire you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They're both wonderful.
Takes us item four, approval of minutes until July eighteen, P G. Take a motion.
I say.
Wilford motions.
I'll say.
Third, seconds. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Break us to the administrative section. Item A and B. Just want to highlight two to item B. I, I'm excited about item B. This allows student athletes to earn credit in lieu of the present credit. And there's pluses and minuses to it. Individual kids have to decide what's best for them. But from strictly from a school system point of view, if you're out there and you're playing volleyball or marching band or something, do that two semesters, get a PE credit for a whole year, two P semester credits. That frees time up the schedule for electives. For CTE possibilities for higher education classes. Other classes of electives if you might want to. I think this is a big deal. And Mr. Barnett has jumped on this and got it before us and I'm going to encourage the board to approve this tonight. We'll get rolling on this.
Make a motion, let it pass. Certainly.
The story makes a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Break us to the finance section. Any discussion?
I think Mr. Lucas had a few things he needed. Got it. It's written. Or your.
That microphone's dead.
Okay, I'll round it. Couple items I just wanted you to be aware of, thank you for working through and I don't think we need any formal action for one of them, but maybe just an understanding. So we got, we hired, we did an MOU for a clerk of the works for the Duval project and we kind of know where that's at right now. So we've been at a crossroads, you know, is our clerk going to go to a different county? Is he going to take another job? We're going to have to find another clerk. So based on current timelines, we're looking at December, January. It's like roughly beginning over at Duval, maybe demo before that, but some construction in December, January. So our clerk is still on the Harper Hoover job. What we've been discussing is that if he stays on to that Hoover job until September, October, that timeframe, we have things that we can employ him to do. We just have to have the okay to do that. We're going to have an HBAC project going on in Hamlet that he can assist in clerking on. The actual project will probably be finished up by then, but there's other needs in the county. We could, we could probably use that person in the maintenance, maintenance staff. But basically, we're going to work and, and monitor that timeline and see, we don't want to spend money that we don't need to spend. But it's close, the closer we can get it to the timeline, that's what we're going to try to do there. If that's okay. And then the other thing I wanted to let you know is that we had a PEA rate change this year. Some of you are prior employees, you've been through that before, this is my first time through this. I don't know that any of this is directly our fault. It seemed like according to other counties and various email chains is that it's something that always happens. So one of the things is the spousal surcharge is new. We had to withhold the insurance before we even knew who the spousal surcharge applied to. So what I'm telling you is I'm trying to get a letter sent to every employee that has any type of financial healthcare premium change to give them a month, a month and a half to prepare for paying us, paying the county for their insurance that should have been withheld before to catch it up.
So the amounts will be given to.
They'll be given to them, some people are going to get a credit, you know, we owe them money, some people will owe us. I think the highest number that I've saw is about six hundred and fifty dollars and there's credits. So it's going to range, it's going to be an individualized letter identifying our plan to recoup that. And like I said, I don't think that's anything we've done in my office. Seems like a statewide problem every time there's a rate change. Of course, if there was something that we did, I'll make you aware of that too. But I just wanted you to know that we'll be sending a notification out, so if you get.
So will you send that to the principals when they meet with the staffs, the very person?
We're going to send it directly to staff, staff home addresses. I mean, we'll send out an email that says, hey, we sent this out, if you didn't get something, let us know so we can go back and notify those people.
Yeah, the principals need to have.
We're going to use, yeah, we're going to use the addresses in the system. So that's.
Handle that. If I understand correctly, the employee pays a certain rate and they want their spouse to be on their insurance, they will pay an additional rate.
Yes, so if the spouse has coverage available at their employment, but they don't want it, they want to be on PEA, they've got to pay the surcharge premium. Now, if they don't have coverage or anything like that, it's, it's fine, there's a waiver.
And there's no surcharge on.
There's no surcharge, but if you work Toyota and your wife works here and you want to be on PEA because it's better, you'll have to pay an additional premium to be on that plan. Yeah, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to second, approve finance?
I'll make that motion.
First, second, also. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Personnel section, I'll direct to you. Personnel to be addressed tonight. One correction on item A. Number two, it actually says Duval Pre-K nine. Typo is Duval Pre-K eight, doesn't affect anything, I just wanted to point that out. And if there's any discussion. The story makes a motion.
Snyder.
Snyder. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Then breaks to the comments and concerns section. Any member have any comments or concerns?
If there is any way at all, we could, we could either put on Facebook or advertise or something what's going on in Duval for the parents who are in Duval Pre-K, you're paying. Let them know that we haven't lost our money, we have canceled the project, the state hasn't canceled the project. We're not dragging our feet. We're as anxious as anyone. If that project started, I think it would be really encouraged because right now, parents really have to cut a lot. Because we didn't know anything. It's hard to report anything, we don't know anything.
I'm actually working on that with Chris Bracken.
Great, okay. Good deal.
And I really, I know this is not really important, but I wish we could clean up that stuff.
Have you been?
Listen, I watched that for a year now and it's just really been a good thing.
I just passed.
I'll grab a.
You're not grasping over.
Thank you. But then it's not tall for too long and I'm glad you did.
It's all in one nice deep little pile.
Also, I actually have a question in regard to Duval. We, we are holding back three billion dollars that Duval project. Is that correct?
Yeah, we've actually made our first payment on the lease purchase already. We can't delay those payments, so we technically already paid.
And that was, that was when you designated the HVAC system.
Yeah.
Which was.
Which was going, that's the portion I was going to pass. Now that there's a new redesigning of that system, a new redesign of the school, where does that contract with that HVAC company fall?
It's not going to be directly with the HVAC company, it'll be with the general contractor that does the work. So what happens is we're doing the same thing at the field. We receive the invoices, the architects and engineers have to review the invoices, pull out those items. We pay them all upfront, then we submit reimbursement to Boca Valley Bank and then they send us the funds. Okay. But yeah, there's, there's more than enough equipment there. We, we picked out the HBAC, but in a redesign, if it happens to be two and a half instead of three, they can pull kitchen equipment. There's other available items that, that were on there.
I just want to make sure I'm correct, I tell someone that we have three things set, set aside, that we actually do have the three things set aside.
And if the cost goes down too, Austin, would that jump up our percentage of what we're paying too? Would that be represented too?
If, if the cost, you mean if the, if the redesign lowers the cost?
Yes, and we're still, we provide three million, that, that would show that our percentage of buying, I guess, is more than it is right now.
Well, they'll want additional funds from us.
What do you think?
I don't know. I mean, if it ends up being eleven and a half million instead of fourteen million. I, I mean, we can only.
How like know those answers?
I don't, yeah, well, hopefully in a couple of weeks, we'll have some answers for some of that, but they, they will.
Next week it tells ten billion dollars, that's, that we've come up with, that's.
It won't be that we have to come up with, their original split was eighty-nine, eleven.
That's what I'm saying.
So if they, if they keep, you know, if they keep a similar percentage and it's a million, there'd be another billion dollars. So we don't know. Keeps me up at night.
Yeah, thanks, Aris.
We live longer than they had.
Appraisal or self appraisal. I told you that, oh yeah, dudes kind of get on site to do it and everybody's happy. Well, that thing's a nightmare. I, I wrestled with it and didn't get anywhere. Dana wrestled with it and didn't get anywhere and we both contacted school board, education president Kent Brown. And he said, that's not really our thing, it's on our website, but the state department thing. So get me to this weekend, the way I understand it works is that I have to get on there, set up a site or something.
Or just.
And then you all get into it and then I'll send it on to people in the state department. You know.
Was it twenty-seven or thirty-five, didn't send them in, I'm like, well, no wonder.
It's not the.
Really no instructions on how to do that.
Anything together.
So get me this weekend and let me work on that and I'll go get that out. We still got August fifteenth, so. But when you get it, but you don't sell it.
I probably won't do it.
I have a, I have a question. This information, this integrity, will that allow for a weightlifting class?
It, it will allow for another class, I mean, it could. If they, you mean if they had a weightlifting class?
Okay, well, we have a weightlifting facility, we need a weightlifting class.
Yeah, Polly didn't send me that. I asked her for what, you know, to give me a list of everything they do currently. And what this does, and what I, what I made them understand was this is a non-graded, non-GPA class, that credit that they get. So I told her just be careful, what there's some of her student athletes who depend on that PE credit to keep them eligible. They don't want to take advantage of this. But you know, you may have other students on the other side of coin who are, well, I'd really love to take that AP class or I'd love to take that CTE class, but I have to have PE and I haven't had it yet, I'm a junior. Well, if they've been in marching band for years, there's the credit.
So it should go back and pick up.
A weightlifting class set up as weightlifting class. That's what you're asking, you know, the principal of the school, people set up a weightlifting class.
As far as I'm aware, there had to have been a weightlifting class over there. The weightlifting equipment used to be here, then Duval came in, they moved it over there. It's really nice, it's really nice.
Oh, it's, it's nice stuff. It's nice stuff, I use it every day.
Yeah, I was thinking for a year, implement a class in there, I think that it would be fairly easy.
It can be, it's, it's, you know, they have two instructors over there. And as it turns out, one of them's going to have to pick up a couple of sections or whatever. If, if this does what it can do, then that would free up somebody that needs a section of weight. So if, you know, if this pulls out, you know, twelve band kids, eight soccer kids, three volleyball kids and they take advantage of this credit, then it absolutely could happen. We just have to wait and see how it's going to work in the schedule.
Oh, we'll get the manager.
Yeah.
This first semester, of course. I'm assuming that these kids fall into the schedule. But it could be a, a class put in second semester. And they'll go over there. Like I say.
Schedule right away and just not offer it in the first semester until we see how this works out.
But would they hit their finish? Would, would, on anybody. I mean, if they're not in the first semester, they wouldn't get a whole program.
They'd get a.
Anybody have any others reserved?
Is there a reason we got this this week?
Yeah, I'm talking to, we're talking after. Austin presented that to us as a bid that he got for that, that building. And going back and in connection with the MOU you're going to put out to the Duval people, if there's some way you can stretch. Uh, if there's some way you can stress that. These no Duval money has been spent on this football. Uh, that's, that's. That's the fallback position.
Excellent.
Athletic facility, yeah. Okay. Uh, anybody got anything else?
The last thing that they're, uh, Rob brought to my attention today that, uh, there's a training that board members are, are going to go to and. Two of you have signed up for it ahead of.
On September the seventh.
Eight, the seventh.
You turn your ear to seven hours.
I had to, but just a smile last year.
We all need to go with that.
And get it on.
Friday evening, Saturday morning and we're going to get it done.
And now with the good weather, get up.
And it's in Charleston.
Yeah, yeah. It's in Charleston.
Put me on there.
You go call Sam Robinson. Get out there.
I think I've already done it, Robin.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? If not, I will ask for a motion in a second. So until August first.
Jeremy Wilson. And Mr. Snyder.
And Snyder and the time is. Thirty-seven, thirty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is the end of the hearing.